Next.
Steve, you said Sue said ten, you said twice, so how does that look to me? Do I deny? I'm trying to compare between ten twelve.
No, it was between six and twelve and nine.
I don't think it's six. And it went so far.
There's three copies.
You could have waited until you drove on. And David would agree, he shot his lawyer right at him. I know.
Everybody say? Thank you. I have not had a chance to try. Good. I have not had a chance to call you. If you called, did you call it in? You want to tell me what's that?
No, no doubt.
Good.
Could you please return the good service?
When I have a chance, yes.
I didn't mean that you started this.
Did you know that?
That's the version of those. Yes. One is two. They're proof. It's proof.
Thank you.
That's what I said. It's fantastic.
It's in the same sentence, earth removal. Is this not a?
It's a special permit.
This is, is this a special permit hearing for earth removal? As an amendment to the RGFA or are they?
No, no. When the RGFA came in, there was a condition that if they went over a thousand cubic yards, they had to come in for special permits for earth removal. And then they have the, Mark has a buyer and the buyer has wanted to make some changes. And so to the site plan, so there will be some slight amendments to the site.
Wait a minute, this is two separate?
Yes.
Meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
So if they're related.
Well, they are, but it's two separate, it's two separate hearings. One is for the earth removal special permit.
Right.
The other one is for RGFA amendments.
Right.
Okay. Well, it doesn't say that here. Which should we approach first, the RGFA amendments?
The fans off.
I would suggest the amendments and then how those amendments relate to the.
All right, so hearing number one, I'm opening the public hearing on RGFA amendments. Who's doing the presentation? You are?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Brian Nelson, I'm veteran in the hearing. Our project for forty-one Glen Road is before the board back in 2014. And we're here tonight to present some minor changes for the project approved. And do you have an existing conditions board? Wish I can throw up if you'd like, but I thought that this proposed site plan would be a good one to start with. Just to orient you to the board, Glen Road is located at the bottom of the page, north is going straight up. The property is roughly five acres of land. If you remember, there's a conservation restriction on the easterly.
What's on the board? How all that is. What amendments would you like to make to the RGFA?
Amendments are pretty straightforward. Basically, it entails the construction of a pool out at the back of the house, a surrounding terrace, and a cabana in this location right here. So there are a couple of minor adjustments to the grading out back, but it really just pertains to the construction of pool, cabana, and so just here terrace.
Do you have architectural choices? What about exterior lighting? What are you adding to that? Who's doing that?
I'll be doing the presentation if someone is back.
Let's do the architectural first.
Okay. So we have a 225-foot unheated accessory structure. Essentially, the cabana design of what's the terrace and the pool. The architecture is essentially a large porch, outdoor porch around a fireplace that comes up through the middle, and there's a third-story length for the porch. The function of the enclosed area, which is unheated, no plumbing, is a pool, furniture storage, a small changing room, and then a refreshment stand with a refrigerator. The architecture of the house is a cabana, excuse me, and I'll just refresh you, I know you're familiar, is designed to complement the architecture of the house that, as approved, I'll hold it up side by side. So we're using elements of the shingle style with the fieldstone and the shingle and the columns are repeated in the cabana. So and the sum total is actually before the enclosed unheated space is 225 square feet.
Okay. You're, are you doing the landscaping or associate?
Eric will come in and he'll also address the lighting and the associated.
So as you can see on this plan, which is the planting plan, this be highlighted area is the area that we were adding. In association that, we have moved some tree, some arboretis around to screen a pool equipment and a generator that we have relocated to the back of the pool house. We have added some screening on top of the mound here, which is, consists of an additional eight rhododendron and then 32 boxwood for the total of this area. For lighting, what we had previously was 13,990 lumens permitted, and what we are adding are 10 wall steplights, as you see here in green, so two in the rear wall, four in the pool house, and four along the rear step that leads up to the pool terrace. And then we have two in-water lights inside the pool. And then we have four downlights underneath the awning in the pool house, as well as two sconce lights that match the house light, the house sconces. So this is all under the covered roof.
But it's open?
It is open. Yep. And that would be our, our total is now 21,706 lumens. And then in relation to site views and things of that nature, we've got a few sections here showing site views from the neighboring properties with the screening that we already have. Shows you, you would not see it from 445. And then on top of the mound here, it shows the screening. You come up about 10 feet in natural grade, then on top of that, we're putting some screen in turn, in, in the form of rhododendron.
During this process, I've spoken with all three of the neighbors, Mrs. Saunders is here, and all three of the neighbors are either neutral or supportive of our end pool in the cabana. I have emails back and forth that I can give to you if you need.
Okay.
And we also have the new buyers here tonight. I'd like to introduce Mark and Jen Dupree, they would stand up. And they've been in the community for the last couple decades, and they very much are looking forward to living on this front.
Is David around?
He wasn't.
We add it to the impervious surface, does it matter?
No, because it was originally there, and then we didn't make anything out smaller when it disappeared, and now it's back, so it's, it's fine.
Okay. Landscaping work, okay. Screening adequately from that path.
My only question is, can you outline where the fence is?
Yeah, the fence is actually outlined on here in yellow, so the fence follows the property line and comes around.
And it's set in from the property line about 10 or 15 feet?
Correct.
With the black vinyl without the top rail? Can the butters down there see that?
There's a, the butters up here, they have a driveway through here, so I'm not sure if they would see it. There is a wooded area between here and the fence.
You're saying the Saunders wouldn't see it?
No, the Saunders are down, are down here. They would actually be looking through the set of screening on their property, and then the screening within here. And it is, it is a vinyl project, no rail fence.
Which one is that?
That's it? Yes.
Couple of questions. What is a vinyl order of trans?
It's a vinyl coated, no rail. So there's a wire on the top?
What is it?
It's a chain link, chain link fence coated in vinyl, black. Yep.
The other question I have is, can I come up and look at that?
Yes, you can.
The order of conditions specifies L3, oh, this is a new one, 22nd, 215. They were all the October 15th before.
Well, it's new because it has wood on it.
Yeah, okay. So this is the screening.
For the house, which also acts as screening for the pool house.
Well, my confusion comes from the fact that there were, the original order of conditions is an October 15th, 2014 plan L3, but there were two versions of that floating around.
Yeah, one version was just an exhibit, which had a red line where the house used to be. And the, the other, so whichever version you see.
Is this the, is this the, the screening goes from here?
All the way to here, yep. From this point to this point.
That's, that's where you're going to our kitchen.
Absolutely. You got it.
Thank you.
Any comments from the planning board?
Lights, they do lights. They do lights.
Is it? Is a big, is a big time. That's the question, how much is, is associated with internally in the pool? How many lumens are we talking about?
So in water, we're looking at 1,108 lumens. There are two hydro LED.
I'm just trying to get a sense for how much light would be emitted, because it's going straight up.
When, when the pool cover is open, which is usually when the pool is in use, there would be some outside sources. Most of the time, the pool cover is closed when it's not in use.
It's automatic pool covers?
Automatic pool cover, yep.
Question I had on that regard was, originally, what was the lumen count?
The original lumen count? Well, we've went through a couple meetings with the pool, but what the, the last permit was?
Last, what's on the pool?
13,990.
So you're increasing the total lighting by 50% just on the pool alone?
Correct.
But if I may add, there's, the majority of the lighting that's not underneath the covered porch are low steplights that are night sky. So they'll be casting a glow of about four or five feet around, you know, perimeter, like separate 20 feet apart when, when it's turned on, the pool is. So that brings up the count by, you know, three or four thousand, just to have that, but it's, but it's a glow that, that gets absorbed into the deck around. It's not shining up, and it's not high up. It's literally like 18 inches off the ground doing a light glow, so it's very unlikely that.
Actually, only, only four of those are 18 inch, are, are already ground and exposed. The other ones are, are only about three inches off the ground, just lighting the step to get up to the pool.
We do have two steps that get up that does the hazard at night. Can you point out where that is?
The four are right here.
Right. And the steps, it's a negative cut towards the house, so you only see those lights towards the house if people don't trip down, coming from the pool to step down towards the house terrace.
That does seem like a lot of additional lumens for just, you know, you say a thousand in the pool, so that gives us from 14 to 15.
Right, so to break it down, in the porch, and let me, in the porch itself, sorry. We have set in approximately 12 feet from the outside, two wall sconces flanking the fireplace, so we're really in a room with almost side flanking wings. And we've introduced a colonnade of decorative, deciduous trees that come around, so the sides of the porch are screened by planting, so only the front is the exposure out to the outside. So the majority of our lighting is really to light up the fireplace. And then we have a couple lights that shine up to the cathedral ceiling, so they're shining up into an enclosed porch, like a stoop or a portico. And so that's where, with the two sconces here, which are purely decorative, and then we have a couple of just spotlights going up into the ceiling, we bring the count up, you know, a couple thousand. So breaks down to three pieces, the pool, the series of, of safety steplights here, a couple of coming around, like there's one here, one here, two back here, just to do the perimeter, this is a raised retaining wall, so the light is being contained within the cut of the pool. And lastly, perhaps the majority of the lighting that we're introducing, the jump is underneath this porch roof and set in quite a bit, half of it's set in about 12 feet from, which is also blanketed on the sides by lights. Are those trees evergreen? No, they're deciduous, but in the winter, they won't be utilizing the pool.
Is the idea that they should be on all the time at night or just only when they're using it, so it's intermittent?
So the idea of the pool porch is too full, but in the summer, when the pool is being in use, you can pull in your furniture, or if it's raining, or if you're hot and come undercover. In the late spring, early fall, the fireplace introduces a place to hang out, pool cover, pool might be not in use, you cover the pool, and they just want to have a fire, and, and any lighting would be probably on dimmer because you want the romance of the fireplace. So it's like outdoor cabin.
My question, if nobody's using it, the lights won't be on?
No.
Are they on, are they on motions of technical?
I think they're on wall switches operated both at the cabana and at the back of the house. So, so it's like an accessory structure, it's unheated, when they're not using it, the lights won't be on.
But I think that makes a difference, you know, if somebody's actually using it, fine.
Yeah, they're hanging out for the evening, and then they go home and, you know, and it's, it's probably a, you know, a weekend seasonal use.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, besides the two wall sconces on either side of the fireplace, there are, how many lights are shining up into the ceiling?
Yes, there's, there's four.
And there are four?
Correct.
Two, which are, two of which aren't?
Well, actually, I'm sorry, there's, there are four mounted to ceiling, two are planted at the fireplace.
At the fireplace.
Opposite, so what I have is, these purple lights are the ones under the cabana. So they're, they're simple track lights. Two will be shining on the upper ceiling just to give a soft glow, and two will be shining at the fireplace to illuminate that wall of stone that's set in 12 feet.
They're all the same?
Yes. They're, they're like the standard lighting.
But if they're track lights, it means they're on swivels.
Right, but they're intended to shine the fireplace and the ceiling only.
And they're set up within two to three feet or even more into the cathedral.
Right, they're, they're, you have to get on a huge step ladder to get the, so once they're set by the electrician, they'll be set. And lastly, the two wall sconces are really decorative to give some glow on either side of the fireplace, they'll all be on dimmer, and they may not even turn on the ceiling lights at all. It's really, you know.
If they're not going to turn them on, maybe they don't need them.
That's possible. We can reduce the quantity up there from four to two and simply choose to illuminate the ceiling or illuminate the fireplace, that might be a reasonable.
The sconces, you're already illuminating, you know, around the fireplace.
Yes. Yeah, so we'd be happy to take two off, because that, leave some uplight, because we have a beautiful cathedral ceiling and a clear story.
You had a question?
Yeah, I'm Jonathan Butler, 71 Silverman Lane. This is a five-acre site. I just don't see why it'd be a big deal if somebody wants to have some lighting within the regulations again.
Jonathan, it's because when you get a lot of light concentrated in one area, you tend to get light glow. And so this is, this is, it may be a large site, but it's also a site that's related to conservation trails.
But nobody's out at night on a conservation trail. Well, I'm out there more than you on the trails. I'm just saying, you're just making a big deal once again. It's a five-acre site, you don't let people do what they want to do, and there's just too much regulation again.
Okay.
In your opinion. I mean, enough's enough. This is not my site, I've got nothing to do with it, I'm just a fellow Western resident, and people just want to build what they want to build.
So we would be willing to take two of those ceiling tracks out. So Sue would like to know if you can show us the town land and any trails nearby and how they're affected by the issue of the pool and the lighting.
Yes. So the town trails come through the property here, which I don't, are they on your plan? It'd be good to get your plan out. This one, it shows on this one. Okay. All right, so this is the, the path coming through here, and then within the woods, this comes around and goes back. So there's about a 150 to 300-foot woods buffer from the trail to the back of the cabana, which doesn't have the, you don't see any lighting at the back of the cabana.
But as far, what would you see during the day, through screening?
What would you see of the cabana?
From the dirt, from the trails.
The cabana is actually set in the grade about three feet, so what you would see is there's some minor rody screening on the back of this hill, so it's set within the grade three feet. The grade actually comes up to a high point of 291 here, where we're set at 280, so you have 11 feet of just grade, and then on top of that, we're proposing a few rhododendron plantings. They're not on the conservation land. They're on, they're on this land here.
She's asking if they're on the plans, maybe you can switch to the.
Oh, yes, 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 they are on the plan, sorry. As you can see here, we have them up in here, and we've added an additional eight of those, as shown here. And we moved some around, and we also added some from our, our last admission.
Okay. All right. She's saying it's not a five-acre site. What is it?
It is a five-acre site with a two-acre conservation.
It's a five-acre site including a two-acre conservation.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I have another question. So our trails are open 24 hours a day in the town, like people can walk there at like three in the morning kind of thing?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Especially during.
Okay, any other questions?
In that case, somebody moved it, except.
Can I bring up another topic? Mark and I had a meeting with Chief Sore the other day, and basically, the chief looked at this and said that he, his top priority would be within the size of the building, with his recommendation would be to have a sprinkler put in the building. It is under 14,000 square feet.
Okay.
But he is very concerned, we went over, you know, how he'd maneuver vehicles and whatever, he's okay with the driveway width, which is 12 feet.
12.
The, the one request that he firmly made was that a pullout area be provided that's roughly 12 feet wide and roughly 40 feet long.
Where?
Within, can you?
It's right here, it's in this area.
Right in there. It's a flat area, it would allow a vehicle, two vehicles to pass. He, grass pre.
Has to be asphalt?
Grass pre would be used, as long as it can support one of his agents. So that's the request he's made. He seemed pretty adamant about that, and I think that.
Couldn't you just tell us we can't require a sprinkler system in a building?
Right.
He's recommending the sprinkler system.
And you might have enough savings over the years of insurance that makes it almost that good.
But we can't require it?
Well, I will tell you, I did try to talk with my insurance company today about the issue of a sprinkler system, and I didn't get too far. And basically, my insurance company stated that it would be a minimal cost impact. It would.
Really?
Yeah. Which made no sense to me, and I told my insurance company, so, but I think it would be an interesting question to ask.
I do have a friend that told me that, you know, he moved into a house in a sprinklers, his insurance company was real happy with it, gave him a break, take a break.
Well, be that as it may, we can't require it.
Right.
We can suggest.
It's not a pervium.
We could, I get, I don't know, you suggest something in the conditions of approval.
Well, we can say that it was recommended by the fire chief as a, as a site, as part of the discussion.
Could, should.
As far as the pull-off area.
I think we can require that. Yeah, I don't have an objection to that. Do you, Mark?
Well, the deprays, like the planning board, want to keep the asphalt areas to amend them, and really don't want that turn up.
He's talking about grass pre, which is.
Yes.
Which grows grass up in the spaces.
No, I understand. My first choice is not to have that.
My understanding is, it's that or the driveway gets to be 14 feet.
Even if, well, if it became 14 feet, I don't think it would actually do what the chief wants. He wants trucks to be able to pass one another at 14, I don't think they'd pass one.
Maybe he wants it 16 feet. We were trying to, we're trying to keep, this is exactly what the conversation was.
You guys may have been outside.
While he was here.
No, we're listening.
This is why we're looking for, you know, some sort of standards, so that we can, you know, we don't get into this kind of push-pull situation.
I don't think you've ever heard us wanting to have less asphalt.
I think I heard at least one person, another person, they always say that the fire department has the final word. Did I not hear that?
You did.
Yes.
Yes. Although we, we're looking at an applicant here that doesn't appreciate that final word.
How about putting a grass strip?
That's what we were just talking about.
But regular.
It's going to bear the truck.
Yeah, it's going to carry a lot.
So it has to have the structure underneath, and you put grass on top of it.
You still can have a substructure, and you can still have it porous, and you can still have natural grass there, so they don't have to worry.
Right, right.
And that would accommodate them on.
And that would accommodate them on their ass.
It's got to support that truck.
And that what grasscrete is?
Grasscrete is...
Yeah, but you can also do it in a manner that...
You only need four to six inches of lumen for your grass, and the rest of it can be a solid substrate. And that would accommodate what they would like to do. All right, we can, we can put gravel on this, in that area, like we would do under the regular asphalt. And then, and then top it with four inches of lumen and gravel.
But he's going to want you to provide him the information that whatever you're doing there will support. He has a weight requirement.
Yes, he'll support it. He may, he may go through three, four inches of lumen.
He needs to, to review and approve whatever it is that's...
Yeah, because what he'd be talking about would be a pumper truck or a tanker truck to provide water.
It's either got five hundred gallons or seventy...
It's called an HP twenty loading.
It'll, it'll handle it.
So we can, we can do this grass area that will be like a heavy-duty grass area that will support the truck.
As long as it's okay with the fire department.
Yeah, we'll make that happen.
The point is that once we have something like this specified, then we don't get into this kind of, you know, what is it, what does it look like? That, that's what, that's what we're trying to get to.
So if we approve this with, with one of the conditions being that the staging area that required, requested by the fire department, you propose one which is, gets their approval, we're fine.
Yeah, Mark and Jen, I think if we're only seeing grass, we're not even going to have papers at this point. It was going to be grass before, so it'll still be grass.
So if we want to do anything other than a gipcrete, we go to the fire department and get their approval for, for something that will support their apparatus.
When you say gipcrete, what do you mean?
I meant that, that...
The grasscrete?
Grasscrete, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the wood we'll have to leave it. Does that, does that kind of require taking out more material than you calculated for?
Yeah. We'd have to see, we'd have to see what's there, there's somebody's ledge, but...
You got to leave at least twelve inches unglided that you got to dig out.
Yeah, I would say yes.
In that case, and the other thing I would like to say is, so that you don't have to come back to us with an amended earth removal application. Could you run that calculation just to be sure that you're not going to have to add to it?
Yeah, it's really simple, twelve by fifty times one.
Six hundred cubic feet, which is about one cubic yard additional. All right, so you're, just, you're going to measure application to what, for what to what?
I would intend on the third additional. No, we're doing cut, so this is fill.
This is the removal?
Yeah, so, so he'll dress that in the next...
No, I understand, I just, okay. Oh, good.
The way the lumen of work fence is set up now, Mark, there's a jog there. Is that contemplating this, or is that going to...
No, that was originally there. It'll have to come out a little more, but that was originally there.
We have to kick it out a couple feet.
Oh, so I'll make a motion that we accept the plan for four forty-one Glen Road with the amendments and conditions that we discussed specifically with the fire department.
Second. Paul Faver?
Hi. This is the second.
I, Roy.